It is six P M and we are gonna call this meeting into session. What on time. Just for Ben, like to open with a pledge, allegiance fall by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now moment of silence as we think about those who've gone before us. Thank you. Roll call please.
Trusty O'Malley.
Here.
Trusty Patton.
Yes, I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Ryan.
Here. May Vanessa?
Here.
Trusty Bushner.
He is here.
Trusty Pine.
Yes.
And Trusty Lewis. Also in attendance is Tommy.
Yes. That's one of her favorite. I just printed everything out, anything the mayor gave.
Are you?
I just printed them all out.
I am out of being.
What's that?
Yes, yes.
Alright, so we have a few announcements. First off, we have started milling and paving in the village, we did some milling already, the paving I think has been delayed because of the weather, so the paving on snow, classic Albany Saratoga, and what's the other street? I don't have it on the agenda, but that's Stark, Stark Street? Really tiny one, I have it on the webpage, anyway.
Yeah, Stark was on there.
That's gonna be happening just a day later than originally planned because of the weather, so I think it's Thursday and Friday, and then Monday if needed, no parking between seven A M and five P M during those times. Neil, anything you wanna add? Take that as a no. What's that?
You gotta call and step away.
Oh, that's fine, alright. We have hydrant flushing coming up on September ninth, Monday, that's for wards two and three, and Tuesday, September tenth, for wards one and four. Yeah, it is Stark Street, I just found it. The Fraternal Order of Eagles, ARI two, four, six, seven, has advised the village of their intent to renew their liquor license, which expires soon. That doesn't require any board action, that's just an FYI, unless we wanted to.
Unless you wanna object.
Object, which I don't think we do.
No.
Alright, moving on. We do have, and we provided this in the newspaper on August first, we provided early notice on public review for the proposed activity located in a hundred year floodplain. This is part of the CDBG grant we're working on with the town. Phase one of the Woods Brook Improvement Project will seek to increase floodwater storage upstream through existing culvert modifications and floodwater storage facilities. Future phases will include improvements to existing culverts within the village, daylighting portions of the stream, and realigning the stream to broaden hydraulic capacity and protect existing structures to remain. Approximately thirty acres of floodplain are mapped within the project's assessment limits. Direct impacts will seek to improve the existing floodplains to reduce severity of future flood events. The proposed project is located in multiple locations within the village of Huesick Falls and town of Huesick, Rensselaer County. Written comments must be received by August sixteenth, if anybody has anything to add to that. And I do have all that information up on the website, in case you didn't catch all that. Uh, let's see here. The village is still looking for two more to serve on the zoning board, and our next regular board meeting is on the second Tuesday of September. September tenth, what's that? Ooh, next zoning is the twenty-sixth of August.
It's a joint zoning colony.
Alright.
With a public hearing.
Alright, thank you.
Yep, Monday, six P M.
What's that for?
That one is to public hearing for ninety-three Main Street and for Parsons Avenue. For chains of use.
Alright, a few updates to pass on, in terms of the highway garage, we have signed contracts, things are in motion, finally, 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 finally. They, I think they're either staking out, they staked out the property corners today, or they'll be doing that later this week. Preparing the ground, compaction, all that stuff is starting, but things are moving. So in terms of the highway garage, that's where we're at. Sewer project, Andy, do you wanna just describe a little bit of what's gone on the past month or so where we're at?
The department has approved the work plan for that section of the sewer project. Log Lyman Street. The contractors, both Louisey and J-Square, have put together estimates for compliance with the work plan. The issue there obviously is getting impacted soils or impacted groundwater, and the D E C approved work plan is how that has to be handled and managed. That added some additional taxes to the sewer project, and we've gotten estimates from both contractors, as well as oversight that has to be done by Sterling Environmental Engineering, while work is being done. D E C will be on site, let part of the sewer project is being done. Right now, we're finalizing those contractor estimates, considering impact to overall project budget and financing, and trying to put all these pieces together so the sewer project can get that done.
We're expecting J-Square to do their phase, I think, within the next week or two, right?
They're gonna be putting in some sheeting in the area of one of the proposed pump stations.
Yeah.
The actual pump station work will follow later on, but the media work is just driving some sheeting in.
And then Louisey Brothers, we're expecting them to remobilize somewhere in mid September. So that's where we are at with that.
Did we sign off on the, the work on the greenway?
The work on the greenways, um.
Repair?
Repair.
Oh, yeah. Brian can report on that one, but you want.
When they resurfaced.
Yeah, I know they did that, but don't we have to sign off on it saying we're okay with what they did?
Um, I don't think we.
But that may be near the end of the whole, whole project.
Yeah, because they still have a little more restoration to do at the very end, but the fact that they came in and done all that, we would absolutely sign off on, because they actually did more than.
Okay.
What they initially.
I think we're ways away from going to the final sign off, but when that time comes, we'll.
Brian, are you talking about what we talked about last month?
The northern leg where it was.
That was kinda tore up and everything, so they did fix that?
Yeah, they went through, they resurfaced, they, I don't, I think Neil mentioned it could have probably been brought through the roller, but still, they, they actually took care of a lot of it and restored it way better than it.
Was.
Yeah.
Okay.
There were spots where, um, they might have been in betweens where it was okay, but they just kept going through there too, so that was really, they went.
Yeah, it's certainly not as level as it once was.
Yeah.
Neil said he would maybe rake it and compact it more.
Yeah.
Or he went to.
He's hiding around the corner.
Is that actually Justin, Neil?
Yeah, there is.
Yeah.
Well spoken, Neil.
But Neil, is there any issues with it other than, would you agree they, they really? Yeah.
They're pretty good, yeah.
Yeah.
I've got a video from Neil.
That's a quality video.
It was.
Yep. Does that answer your question, Kevin?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, yep. So that's where we are for the sewer project, the Woods Brook about program. Things are continuing to move forward, which is exciting, we worked out with the state and got official approval to offer a relocation bonus for each property, that's basically five percent on top of whatever their, uh, prices that they're getting for the property from the village. Right now, we have four signed contracts, documents have all been prepared, and we're waiting for the state for approval, hopefully we'll be closing on those within a month. We have another three, I think, that we have agreements in principle, we're getting the contracts together, and another couple that are sort of waiting the wings, making decisions, and so on and so forth, so. I'm hoping that next month we can actually say we have a couple closed and stuff, or scheduled, which would be great.
Once, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine.
Once, once the contracts are signed, and I know you talked about doing the demolition possibly next year, will it be enough money within that million dollars to actually demolish those buildings as well?
Yeah, we, and this actually came up when we were discussing the relocation bonus and getting permission for that, we had to make sure that we included it in our budget. Everything required for demolition, and that includes possibly one of, a pretty large building, which will have some extra cost, so we went through, talked to Neil, I talked to Mark, and we got some good prices on what we thought it would be. We added a little bit of cushion to make sure that we don't get like, oh no, it's all of a sudden more expensive than we thought. The one thing that we're gonna try to do is we're gonna try to wait until we have all the properties, so we can put it out to bid, and thus have competitive bids for, you know, doing demo work or getting hauling for separate different properties, but we are set to do a lot of the demo work ourselves as well. But that, we all had to budget this off, and when we were discussing this, I gave them a new revised budget based on some of the prices we confirmed, the prices that we were expecting, and it still fit within the million, so.
Agreed.
Yep. So hopefully, next month we'll say we have some closing scheduled, and likely, I'd like to, once we have acquired the properties, to sort of do a presentation on, here's what we have now, and here's sort of the next steps, so I'm excited for that. In terms of the Woods Brook, the other Woods Brook product, this is the CDBG grant we are doing with B and L, who is here today, thank you guys. We have one piece of action for Speedy's, we have a bunch of Speedy's stuff later in the meeting, but the tentative schedule I put on the agenda, so that we have an idea of when this work is going to happen. The engineering design work is happening now, and we'll go through the fall, put out to bid in winter of twenty nineteen, and we'll be breaking ground the spring and summer of twenty twenty. And that's all the stuff that's gonna be happening sort of outside the village, to slow things down as it comes into the village, and then the buyout program is gonna help those sort of areas that had issues with the flood.
Just wanted to clarify, when you're talking about outside of, you're talking about the area up on, off of Wall Street Extension, coming in where the retaining ponds used to be, whatever.
Yep.
Okay.
That's all that phase one.
Right.
Really more in the town, getting that work all done next year, then getting the buyout done, so then we can design the in-village improvement area, and next year in the CFA round, we'd like to be going after phase two.
Mm-hmm.
Instruction.
Have you or has the new owner of the Huesick Falls Country Club, have you had any contact with you at all, or have you had?
It's initial, we had some early discussion.
Okay.
And we know we need to have some work.
Okay, I just wanna make sure everybody's on the same page, that's all, just making sure, I know that some of the neighbors have concerns, and I just wanted to make sure that.
Yep.
That everybody's on the same page.
Yep, yep. So that's it for the two Woods Brook related items. The other updates I had is I was able to attend the Natty Bumpo Nathano Shipman sign unveiling, I know Brian was there, I think Kevin was there, Mark was there also for the town. What a really cool event, just a really, really well-done event, interesting, really fascinating history there, so really, so thanks to everyone who is involved in that, I know Mike Chapman played the role for a little while, and Joyce Brewer was there, and there were a bunch of others there, so bravo, that was really, really well done. So that is sort of the end of my updates, we're gonna move on to the people-to-be-heard section, as a reminder to everybody, please state your name and address, and we record as we do all our meetings here, and put these on online later for public consumption. Would anyone like to share this evening, can I get an idea? One, alright, take it away, sir.
Kevin Ellard, five, four, two, one, State Route seven, Huesick Falls, New York, just a quick question, I've missed your last couple of meetings, and the village has been, or was involved in a lawsuit with the previous law firm over.
The environmental law firm, yes.
The environmental law firm, what's the status of that?
Andy?
The status is the, as you might recall, the Rensselaer County Supreme Court granted the village's motion to dismiss most of the claim of the prior law firm and the claim of the public relations firm. The counsel representing both parties, Bean and Mr. Eldor's, appealed.
Okay.
They have what's called perfected their appeal, they filed their brief, their argument, and we have submitted our answering brief. I will tell you, the village also cross appealed because one part of our motion, dealing with dismissal of a part of their claim was not granted, and if we're going up on appeal, we're gonna have that reviewed. So there's two more rounds of briefing, another brief due from opposing counsel by the end of August, and our final reply brief by the middle of September, and we'll likely argue that in front of the appellate division by the end of the year. Rule of thumb here is after you argue the case, about six to eight weeks for a written decision, then we'll know where we're at in terms of what we have to defend, and that will happen next year.
Next, next spring you'll have.
We should have by the middle of winter, a decision from the appellate division. So just so everyone's aware too, while all this was going on, you may recall that Bean's claim was in the neighborhood of a hundred and twenty plus thousand against the village for public relations services, and with interest, the claim escalated to a hundred and sixty. While we were going through the motion practice and the appeal process, well, let me take a step back, not to belabor this, but we had dismissed, we had sought to dismiss the Bean claim, because that had not been paid, certainly by the village, nor had it been paid by the law firm. And our argument on that point was, we don't know if Bean's ever gonna pursue that claim, your claim is speculative, you don't have any damage yet, no one's paid that. And the judge agreed with us, and that's why the Bean claim was dismissed. While the appeal was pending, the village's former law firm settled with Bean and paid them a hundred thousand dollars. Then made a motion back to the Supreme Court saying, okay, now we have been damaged. The court allowed that Bean claim to be inserted back in, we will be defending that going forward, it's not part of the appeal, okay? But that's, that's out there, so we'll have to be defending the public relations claim going forward. So what's in front of the appellate division now is principally the claim of the law firm for their legal fees.
And Neil would be back at Rensselaer County Supreme Court?
Correct, yep. As I say, by the middle of winter, I would expect, we'll have a decision from the appellate division, we'll know exactly what the extent of the claim is, the balance of it we have to defend. We'll be back in front of the Rensselaer County Supreme Court, at that point they'll give us a schedule for discovery, and we'll, we'll be doing that next year. Just to remind you that the claim of the law firm was in the neighborhood of four hundred and twenty thousand, and we got, on behalf of the village, about three quarters of that dismissed, on a timeliness, basically a timeliness issue. And that's gonna be reviewed by the appellate division, so we'll know much more by mid-winter, we're at.
Okay, but there's still one more step after that, they could go to the Court of Appeals, or is that not something that can go that far?
It will not go that far right now, because the Court of Appeals will only take cases where there has been a final order or judgment entered. Once we get the appellate division decision, it likely will be right back in State Supreme Court, and the Court of Appeals issue, if at all, will be down the road.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mark.
Good job.
We're working, we'll see what the appellate division says. It's good to have one judge agree, we'll be in front of five, so we'll see, we'll see things.
Alright, moving on, thank you Kevin. Got the reports out to you guys early, I assume you guys are a big fan of this procedure now, I like it, so. Ben, is there anything you wanna highlight in the treasurer's report, since we've all seen it?
It looks like Denise has been very busy with outside entities as far as payments and updates with projects that are going on, and it looks like we're trying to get a compatible software to go with the, our own billing software, which is gonna make encoding, the water and sewer stuff go a lot easier.
Yeah, we've been looking at this upgrade, it's a, it's a substantial cost that we've been looking at, and we budgeted for it, so we're okay with that way, so. Unless there's any questions, looking for a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you Brian, thank you Craig, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carries, police report, Bob.
Good evening, alright, if you noticed on the reports that call volumes increased in the month of July, it was a total of a hundred and fifty-seven calls compared to June, which was a hundred and fifty-one. Total calls for two thousand and nineteen were two hundred, or nine hundred and thirty-nine, compared to two thousand and eighteen, which were seven hundred and sixty-nine. With the new format, Mayor, I noticed that January, two thousand and eighteen, February, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah, I gotta find that for me, we'll.
I can, being that they're easy for me to come up with.
Perfect.
So you have in there.
Great.
As long as you rest.
Thank you.
The arrests also increased from July up to ninety-eight compared to, or I'm sorry, thirteen compared to June, which were eight, total arrests for the year were ninety-eight, and total arrests for two thousand and eighteen were eighty-three. The call, service calls are all listed there, I don't really need to draw them in at this point. Arrests were for traffic, D W I warrant, harassment, disorder, and crime. Bob and I met.
And we were.
An update to rules and regulations, what I asked Andy to review was, do we have to have the board approve the rules and regulations? I think he's gonna do some research on that.
Alright, great.
The only thing I know is, it changes, depending on circumstances, so.
Oh yeah.
Certain things, mission, et cetera, et cetera, stay the same, but there will be changes as we go along, procedures may change, training procedures may change. So I'll wait for Andy's okay on it, and then I can kind of put this into more, it's organized, but it's, I really need to.
I'm gonna be sectioning them about like forty-something sections.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's some light reading.
Isn't there like forty-something sections that went through?
There was like a total of forty, fifty-seven.
Yeah, I knew it was fifty, I know it was.
And it's broken down in here, staff, mission, goals of the department in the village, then it breaks down from how do we handle D W I arrests, to juvenile arrests, et cetera, et cetera, it has the update of the, um, workplace violence in there, et cetera, et cetera, so.
And that's like, like we said, a copy of the, not a copy, but the format of an accredited police department, correct?
We filed the format of an accredited police department, and we took from way back, when these were originally established, and we, we built them in here as well, to fit the needs of the village, as to what they were. It's, it's pretty simple, but this is something that the officers have to sign off, that they review these upon employment, and yearly, I go through these, and there'll be an update on a date of when they've been reviewed, and again, submitted back to the officers for review. This is kind of our bible that we have to deal with from the beginning to the end. And just one other thing is that, after meeting with the town, I mentioned about the town park, we've got a pretty good grip on it, I closed it down one night, at seven o'clock, and again, it wasn't because of the, the normal use of it, it was the use of some rowdy individuals that went in there, and we're not gonna listen to anybody, so we had to close it down. And they weren't happy, but they moved to the village park. Kept an eye on here, so. I mean, that, that's it.
Alright, any questions?
Andy, do you know when we'll have, when we have, I mean, you have to review the whole thing, is that correct, or?
I'm not gonna review the whole document.
Right, but.
I'll look at that issue.
Just the issue whether we have to adopt it.
Is it simply an administrative approval by the chief, or it needs to be approved by the whole?
Okay.
I'll look at that issue.
And, and keep in mind that it, it looks like it needs to be reviewed by a board member or board, that Bob, I mean, you know, I, that might help.
Yep.
That it was reviewed by.
Yep.
By Bob.
Passed it on to the board.
Awesome, alright, thank you sir, and I guess looking for a motion?
Motion.
I don't know who that was.
Second.
Ben was loud, Craig was second, we'll take that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post, carries, thank you, thanks chief. Alright, code enforcement, Mark?
I don't know if anybody has any questions on anything.
Glad to see a lot of things closed.
Yeah.
In the active village court cases, that's awesome.
You did mention one that says possibly for village board to take action on, one center street, a few others there, is that something you wanna address to us or mention to us, it's at the end of your?
Yeah, but, I mean, I think we need to be on the same page, and Andy would end up needing to work with me on them, just like we did before, but, you know, it's, what's your pleasure is, I mean, you know, we've already spent some money, I know we're gonna get reimbursed, but we put some money out there already for what we've done. You know, and I, so I don't wanna, you know, put the village in a tough spot, but one center street is certainly an issue.
Yeah.
You know, and it's an issue for the county too, but I think maybe a conversation needs to start to try and move that along, so that.
Number one, number one center street.
Specialty.
Specialty building. Yeah, right, that, that's being worked on at this moment.
Is it?
Yeah. What happened is the person that owned it went into bankruptcy.
Right.
So the county couldn't foreclose on it, but now they're trying to remove that from bankruptcy, they talked to the bankruptcy judge this week, and, or last week, and got the okay to move that out of bankruptcy, but it has to be agreed upon by the bankruptcy judge, so.
There's still a interest there.
That's the one he was looking to, to get, yeah.
But also, I know though, traditionally, going back to the late eighties, early nineties, when people proposed things to the building, the issue of where people park has come up, so just something I think to bear in mind too, is, you know, was this big hole crater in the roof, and safety, and future use, is it actually viable?
That is a huge hole.
Yeah, and, cause that's.
There's more hole than roof.
Mark, correct me if I'm wrong, right, Neil, that when, when it rains, the rain comes down, the water comes, flows down out of there onto Elm Street, right, by across from Copano's old.
Sometimes pretty fast.
Very fast, yeah, it's like, it's like it's a leak.
Flooding issue, basically.
Well, the problem is, this is probably gonna be this building's last chance, so that.
Yes.
And if it comes down, it's gonna cost the county a couple hundred thousand, I would imagine, with the asbestos.
Oh, I bet.
History of that building, just to tear it down, so they're aware of what, what's happening there, it's just the bankruptcy that's holding that up, that transfer of that property.
But it's good that it's at least made it that far, I mean, that's.
Would the county, would that be one we would discuss with the county about having them cover costs of demolition at that point, because I don't think we could afford that.
Well, they would have to, if it ever gets out of bankruptcy court, they'll be, he owes sixty-five thousand dollars in tax taxes.
Big hole. The county should use that as a learning experience, so, you know, we're having a number of instances, but that's one, he, that guy bought that at auction, he's never paid any taxes on it, here's I can tell, he stripped it, anything that had any value in it, he took, you know, and then just walked away from it, you know, and. And he has a reputation, I mean, he certainly shouldn't be allowed to buy any more properties, but, you know, we've got the one up on like the corner of Cary Avenue and Church Street, where, you know, same thing, purchased at an auction, guy finally, he comes, takes a look at it, decides, nah, this is too much for me, walks away from it, and now we start the cycle all over again, it's gonna sit for another three or four years.
Part of the problem with number one center street too, is the county changed attorneys, and the paperwork got lost, so the first attorney who was working on it, he, I don't know whether, threw the paperwork away, and then had to start with a new attorney, he's had to start from scratch, and to learn the whole case again, so. That's why, one of the reasons why this is taking so long, and.
And I did talk to him down there, and he did tell me that it had gone bankrupt, so they knew there was a holdup, but I was just, I know there's interest in the building, and if there's ever a chance to save it, you know, the village, I think, just needs to let them know that we're interested in, in the building, and not that we are interested, but we're interested in seeing something happen with the building, rather than just.
Demolition.
Continue to sit there and fall apart.
You know, I've been, I've been hounding, actually been in contact, talking to Rich Chris, who is the assistant to the county executive, Bill Film, who's in real property, and a whole bunch of others about the property, and they're all aware, and they're all hopeful this, this happens, and so it's just a matter of getting out of bankruptcy court.
I think it's also important to whoever, whether it's someone we know or don't know, that has a plan for it, that we also, they probably should show they have financing available to at least stabilize the building, so that four years from now, we're not having the same conversation, or the building's become even more unstable and unsafe, and is.
Well, it may be, it may be too far gone.
At this point, yeah, I mean, I kinda think based on the crater in the roof, and the flooding, and the water flowing, et cetera.
I'm wondering, why are we even, like, it sounds like it's gonna be a long process before it gets to the bankruptcy stuff.
I mean.
Are you, would you go in, or do you not feel it's safe?
No, I would, I would go in, I've only been in part of the first floor, when I found a door open one time, but I never actually walked through a whole building.
There aren't many windows left, you can just, well, I mean, I don't know if it'd be safe to, especially with the roof crater, and what's below that, is that, you know, stable?
There was a couple others on that list too, that we needed to, you know, we need to do something, with that barn on Elm Street, I had Neil, I had Bruce went and looked at it, they think it's something they could probably take down, I think it's, it's small enough where we could handle it, but you can't tell it from the street, but if you take a walk down the driveway, look at the back of the thing, the whole back of that barn has collapsed. The, you know, owner, I finally did, after two, three years of trying, finally talked to the owner, who told me that it's actually, it's a corporation, not-for-profit, they're trying, they wanna get rid of the building, that there is no money, you know, so.
Is maybe two the brick one?
Yes. Found, a couple of Fridays ago, I found the front doors were open on that, I did go in on that one, just to make sure nobody was in there or camping out in there. And basically, somebody years ago started it, they gutted it, and they're putting it together. So that barn is on that property, the brick building, there's no windows left to that thing either, and at the time, in the five years I've been here, I think there might have been one broken window when I started, and now there's like no windows left in it.
Andy, the process that we go through is fairly lengthy, it's several months, right? Mary, do you remember when we, when the tax levy comes back, when we get reimbursed for the cost of the demo? Do you remember that, Andy, when we get reimbursed?
When your next round of.
Yeah, it's November.
I remember when that is.
October, November.
Of the, of next year or this year?
This year.
Is it yellow?
I think it's November.
Yeah, I think it's no later than November, I don't.
I think there's a date.
Yeah.
Played back to.
So if we, if we started our proceedings on this, which require like public hearing, and a couple meetings to go by.
Not gonna make the next round.
But we would have it after we've been reimbursed in the first round of demos.
Potentially, recall that you did financing for the first round of demolitions, that money will come back, the intent was to pay off that round of short-term financing with the re-levying.
Alright, let's, let's check with.
Always clear the decks. Clear the decks.
Let's, let's combine our heads and maybe see if next meeting, we start the, the procedures on, on, on a couple of these buildings, if, if, if that's what we wanna, we wanna go. So, how's that sound to you guys?
Good. Mark, where is Three Shaw Street?
Yeah.
I think you approved it.
Three Shaw, uh, from River Road.
Okay, off of River Road.
On it, right, one address on the street.
On the left-hand side?
Yep.
The, the old barn that's back in the house back there.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a no longer, uh, is that road even considered a village road, Neil?
Yep.
That's by Peters, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, yeah, yeah, old marks on out of, there's a violation on that, the day Peter died. I agree time again, Neil.
Oh, boy.
The house is just a pile now, right?
Yeah.
Pretty much, yep. Yeah, I couldn't have done that.
Timing is everything, huh?
Yeah.
Just one other, like Eighteen High Street, the old Flipstagg property, nobody's been in that building for these ten years. Is that, is that just abandoned or owned by a bank or weird?
Yeah, I, I didn't wanna mention that, Kevin did ask me a month ago about, uh, coming up with a list with all these properties. I have gotten really close, I got as far as formatting how I wanna set up the, uh, the report. Uh, just trying to actually get the time to do it. Um, but that one, believe it or not, a bank spends, it's crazy. Uh, they don't, they, they don't talk to me. Uh, a bank hired somebody to go in and do some work on that one, but they didn't address the structural issues, cause there's structural issues on that house. Uh, which is crazy, so they're, they're actually doing roofwork and they're, they did some sparging on the foundation. And never, uh, touched the rotted sill that's in the back of the property. It's just, so they're, they've spent money there, it's somewhat active, and it is bank, it's, it's bank-owned, obviously. But they're not attack, they're not attacking the, the issues.
They're not even trying to sell the property either, as far as I know.
Right, so, you know, the, the zombie properties are the properties, um, you know, I have a better handle on the, uh, uh, the definition of them. Are the ones, and there are quite a few of them, where the, the bank starts the foreclosure process. Uh, I was just gonna want to that, so they started foreclosure last March twenty eighteen. And people left the house, and that's it, they don't follow through to take the ownership. So when, my understanding as of right now is that, that is technically a zombie property. Because the bank hasn't officially, hasn't officially taken ownership. Um, it's just sitting there in limbo. So if they don't have the ownership, you know, I, they don't, probably management companies aren't working on them, they don't seem, you know.
They're putting it on the person who was living their last, and then.
Which is, which puts that person.
They're also not allowed there in some circumstances too, there's only cash for keys, or they'll say you can't come back. But then, so they can't go mow it, but then the bank's not mowing in, yeah.
So, yeah, so I send out the notice of violation to the owner, well, they don't wanna hear it. You know, I mean, that one, uh, next to the seams up there is a perfect example. You know, that still is in, the last guy who owned that house, and this is five years ago or more, it's still in his name.
Who's paying the taxes?
Well, in some cases, I, I think the banks are paying the taxes.
Well, sometimes it's on the previous homeowner too, where they, the last person known and then they'll pay it or not.
The county is very far behind in their, um, foreclosure, the tax foreclosure process. I'm guessing they're like at least five years behind on some of the.
Based on what you looked into, absolutely.
And Andy, did we have a conversation about that one then?
We did, I think they're up to maybe the fifteen here.
I think the general rents their counties five years behind in everything, but.
I, I think they're working on the fifteens.
So the law is three years.
Twenty fifteen, actually.
Jeez.
They're supposed to go after, after three years, I think it's three years. With exceptions, I think there should be exceptions like.
Up to sixteen yet, that was my last discussion with Bill was I thought they were in a.
I just received the list of the upcoming, I'll let you know tomorrow when I look at it again, what, what the year is on that. But there's another round coming out in the fall, supposedly, probably in the town, who's it anyway, of probably fifteen more properties up for tax sale.
Yeah, I, you know, this doesn't do anybody any good for these properties to keep sitting.
Right.
So I think they should do something, and there's, there should be something, if we can identify like the property and again, that, that Cary and Church. That corner property is a perfect example, you know, I already sold it once in auction, if we can identify that as again, as an abandoned property and somehow speed up the process.
The third time was the most recent sale, I believe, since it's been stripped and.
People do not do anything.
Mm-hmm. But that'd be a great corner to make a part of the road, you're welcome, Neil. Remember swinging that corner, you know, that.
Well, from, from Stewards to Cary Avenue, it would be nice to put, just knock them all down.
Well, I'm okay with that.
There's a bunch right there, they're in shape, yeah.
So did, we, and we did just get a Senate report, I shared with some of you guys, uh, Bobby Cat was the mayor. Um, a hundred and forty-three page report, you know, about code enforcement, I think if you just kinda flip through maybe the, the beginning of that, it just kinda shows you. I think we're, as far as code enforcement, they're starting to identify some areas, uh, where a lot of the smaller villages and towns. Generally speaking, are behind and, and not really doing what they need to be doing for enforcement. I, I really do believe that we're ahead of the curve a little bit on that, um, on that report, so.
Yeah.
I think we've made great progress, just, just looking at this report that you generate every month, just shows us how busy, you know. You are and how much work we still have to do.
Right, the, the court stuff, uh, you know, we, we need to, we do need to talk, uh, and I keep, I do mention it sometimes, I would really like to have a meeting with you guys to talk about. And with Andy, this dead end that we're at with some of these properties.
About the enforcement.
Right, somehow, we can't have a dead end, we need something that, that gives us legally that next step that we can, that we can move forward. And, um.
Let's get that scheduled.
Yeah, definitely. We should try to schedule that.
Yeah, I, I think we need to, we need to talk about it, you know, to, so that we don't end up, I mean, wouldn't you agree somehow we gotta have something?
You, you're talking about those situations where there's absentee code violations, they've gotten appearance ticket, they fail to appear in court. We go to the extent of having the court issue what's called a bench warrant, that can be enforced by the village police department. But there's certain geographic limitations to the village justice court and the village police department, and when they're outside the county or sometimes outside the state. That they're beyond the reach of just code enforcement, and they, they stagnate.
Yeah.
Well, and now.
Full judgment, what do you do?
Yeah.
Do you enforce it as a judgment, you dock it against the property, okay, but that doesn't fix what's going on.
Right.
And it stops the process, because now I'm not even, I'm no longer, because we have a court, uh, situation going on, I can't even go and enforce. What I should be enforcing, which could be a dangerous situation.
It's in the court, right.
While we're waiting, yeah, there's no showing, now you get the warrant, and, you know, unless we get to, unless we can take it a step further and somehow.
These are difficult issues statewide, hence the current, you know, report that you just circulated. It identifies that, that these are difficult issues. And there's even state legislation being proposed to address some of it.
Right, and I think that's, that was the kind of what the purpose of what they have done, what they're, so we're gonna see more probably coming down from the state. You know, but, um, I, I mean, I do feel good in that part, I do think that, I guess I was reading through that stuff, I thought, I feel like we're a little bit ahead of it, so.
Yeah.
I said we saw, we bring back the stocks, we put them right on the lawn over here, you know, the heaven. You know, is that cruel than usual, or is that, you know?
Looks like village law, see, isn't it?
Right on here, we got space.
All right.
Welcome, Brian.
So again, if there's, if there's, in that report, you know, that report. If there's anything that you wanna see, I will, I will work on what Kevin wants, cause I wanna see, I wanna have that list too, that's an ongoing list. But if there's ever anything that you wanna see, just let me know, but I try and. So that stuff has to be in general.
Yep. Any other questions? Thank you, Mark, looking for motion to approve the code enforcement report?
Motion.
Second.
Um, Bobby, Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carries.
Spex on the stocks, like how high they have to be.
You live in Railroad Avenue? Oh, good.
Well, I just need to make sure they're up to code, you know?
All right.
You'll be the first one in them, Brian.
Well, you know.
Good to show they work, right?
You have the community service report, uh, any questions? It's for both June and July, uh, so if there are no questions, looking for motion?
Motion.
To approve, I'll give that to Ben, second by Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carries. Clerk, deputy clerk report.
Um, Judy did this for me, um, we have taken payments in from April water bills and June property taxes. We are in the process of getting the August bills out, um, they'll go in the mail probably Monday. Um, notices have gone out to the homeowners for their leaks, um, in meters that were not read. And we had quite a few of them this time, so a lot of letters have gone out, so.
Maybe mine.
Well, here, back from a few people, I'm sure.
Maybe. I got to redesign the old letter, I get to send it myself, yeah, it was fun.
And we had five new home changes in July.
Marie, were they, were they single families or multi?
A little bit of everything, Bobby, yeah, a little bit of, uh, I mean, I've got the list in there, there's over a hundred of them.
Okay.
Actually, the, I will say through the village and especially in the town, there's been a lot of stuff selling this summer, so.
And the real estate changes, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, things are moving a little bit, it's just great.
Thank you, Andy, thank you, Marie, for help on the redesign of the leak letter. Any questions?
Nope.
For motion to approve the report? Ben?
Second.
Second Vanessa, all in favor?
Aye.
Post?
So this is the mayor's leaked letter, we ought to hear more about this, we're in the chief end.
Moving on.
Seen now.
Uh, highway departments, you guys have the report there? Uh, anything you wanna stress, or Neil, anything you wanna add? I know Neil, you're always jumping to talk.
Did the weather affect us at all today, Neil? I don't think so, okay.
All right.
So are you still on schedule with these dates, Neil, as far as the Friday be the end, hopefully? Okay.
In that case, looking for a motion to approve the report?
Motion.
Motion, second.
Vanessa, thank you, Bobby, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carries. Thank you, sewer department report, uh, is below, and on the next page, it does include the, um. Uh, our, uh, gallons delivered and treated in income, which was, uh.
It's great, it's great revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, sub five thousand, almost, well, four thousand and change.
Yeah, and as we're, um, as we're looking ahead to, um, do that UV project, uh, down at the wastewater treatment plant, I'm kinda keeping an eye on this to see. Saving waste and money for that, cause that will be coming soon. Uh, any questions? If not, looking for motion to approve it.
Motion.
I'll give that one to Ben, cause he's on my right, I don't know, that's all I got.
I, I, I'll throw you down then.
Second, Craig.
What?
Yeah, sorry, he got it first. All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carries, and the water department report also in front of you.
Uh, nothing to point out specific, I know, um.
They get the roof stuff.
The sides are up and the roof is mostly there, so I think, um, they're continuing to work on getting that, and it looks good.
We're still waiting for that third quote on that one thing.
About that, okay.
Um, I, I sent, I called him today, and he's like, I don't know why they haven't gotten back to me, so I called him again, still nothing. So we are still waiting for a third quote to make the purchase on whatever we need to do. Um.
I'll make a motion to accept it.
All right, thank you, Brian. Second, Craig, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
A post?
One thing we checked on with the water department, someone asked about a fire hydrant up on Ice Street. Know what the situation is with that, it's had a cover on it for a couple of years. Is that dead?
Broke.
It's being preserved, future forever.
Do we have any spares, Neil?
Yeah, but it's more in detail than just, you know.
Cause Route twenty-two.
Do you have to go into the road?
Hmm, good possibility.
Well, if it's like the other ones you replaced, I'll have to go a couple feet in.
Isn't that relatively new?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, it's gotta be, that Route twenty-two was, they were all new, that were put in, right, yeah.
That's not so new anymore.
No, it's not, I know, it seems like, I know it's been.
But when you compare to everything else, the other ones that are in the village, they're still in good working shape.
Yeah, one around the corner from me, I think it's older than that.
Believe it or not, we got now up a month, had to break, it's, you know, plenty of paper, so the models to. You'd be amazed at what the contractors put in these plates.
Well, that's awful.
Yeah.
Screw. Oh, yeah.
And that's what clogs them up, and that's what screwed them up?
What breaks them when you go to close. Cause the new style hydrants are totally different, more grass and it's more fragile break, so.
I never thought I'd heard the word fragile and fire hydrant in the same description.
Course it makes sense, let's make the new word fragile, that's brilliant.
The insides are, yeah, they get caught and then it bends, breaks.
All right, um, in terms of minutes, um, sent them out like a, a week or two ago, um, unless you guys have anything, uh, to change or modify. Looking for motion to approve the July ninth regular mini minutes.
Motion, second.
Thank you, Craig, thank you, Brian, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carries, and also for the July twenty-second special meeting.
Motion.
Um, Ben, second, Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Post? Carries as well. All right, trustee committee reports, Vanessa. Craig?
I have anything, um, by, just going back to the zoning board meeting, can you send me the copies of applications for that? I might, I'm trying to see if I can make that.
Okay, we have to.
It's probably a good meeting to go to.
Yeah, I kinda wanna go to that one too. Um, Brian?
Uh, since B and L's here, I will punt on this report.
And I will send him to all of you, so you're all good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, all right, I'm sure we'll be back to you guys as we get through.
Oh, don't do it.
Bobby?
Uh, the only time I have is some of the old business as far as the, regarding the dedicating the, the building in honor of Anne. I've spoken to family and gotten their approval, but I have not gotten pricing. I need to get an idea from us as a general, as the board, I mean, how big and how, you know. In order to get a realistic cost of what a plaque is gonna cost. I need to know how big we want it and what type is like, you know, a bronze plaque or.
Where do we, do we decide on a spot, cause that would probably decide on.
Right, I know, and that's what, I mean, there's.
We decide on the building or the room, that'd probably be.
Well, I thought we decided the building.
Okay, no, I, I thought so, but I wasn't sure.
I feel like we have, I still feel like things are up in the air.
Why don't we, uh, ask the ladies in the office what they think?
Okay, I'm fine with that, cause I, I have a feeling if they come up with an answer, I'm gonna like it, so. Yeah, well, make my life simple.
Yeah.
Neil's gotta hang it up, right?
Once I, yeah, well, yeah, I mean, it's.
As long as it requires a crane to hang up.
We're gonna get Marie on a ladder, that's another duties as assigned.
So Marie, will you, um, I'll, I'll reach out to you guys tomorrow.
I'm great on the line.
Okay. I'll reach out to you, I'll, I'll email you.
All right, great, thank you, Bobby, Ben?
No, nothing.
Kevin?
Um, thank you to all that supported the, uh, summer concert series, everything went off well, except for the weather and a couple occasions, but, uh. Put a damper on things, but it went very well, hope to begin next year.
Yeah, remember the weather, one of them was the heat, right, that was the killer, the hottest day of the year, yeah.
Yeah.
It was unfortunate, but what are you gonna do?
The last one was very well received, and, and it was a lot of people for the last one, yes.
Very good crowd.
Good, awesome.
And, uh, our next event, we'd like approval for is the Walter Wood Tractor Show on October fifth, from eight till four o'clock.
I just need a motion to approve that?
Yes, we do.
I would like to make that motion. I'll second.
So, uh, this is to approve, uh, the park usage for the Walter Wood, um, tractor show, what number is this one gonna be? Just, third, fourth?
Eight, I think.
Eight, my goodness. Eight AM to five PM?
Kinda like Route twenty-two, you just don't know how long.
Eight to four, alright. Eight to four. Alright, um. In that case, uh all in favor? Post, carries, approval, uh anything else, Kevin? Great, alright, thank you. Um old business, a bunch of stuff, I'm actually, um we're gonna probably have to table, I don't have an update yet uh with uh Jackie because I had vacation. And then I had all the Woods Brook stuff going on, so on so forth, so Iowa call back, so I'm asking that we table again. The phone system, I also have to speak with chief. So can.
I'll make a motion to table that.
Second.
All in favor? Post, thank you. Uh the re- requests to refund a portion of the water bill. Um this was the one that came in um.
Few months ago?
Couple months back, and we were back and forth on how uh went to work, and I think that Brian dug up or, or, or Andy dug up. Uh some local law about this. Right here, oh, thank you. Um and in local law, number two of two thousand nine, portion three one two refunds and abatements. A refund or abatement on a bill for metered water can be made only for one of the following reasons. One, where an error has been made in the reading of the meter or the preparation of the bill. Two, when the meter upon test shows an average over registration greater than two percent. And three, when any charge of the village has been paid twice or incorrectly. Uh the original receipt bill is become a.
But it also specifies leaks are not considered grounds for adjusting.
Yeah, oh, sorry, it says three eleven adjusting bills, the amount of water registered by any meter shall be charged and paid in full and full. Irrespective of whether such water having uh after having been registered was lost by leakage, accident, or otherwise. When meters fail to register correctly and during the time meters are removed for tests or repairs, the charges for water will be assessed. On estimate amount, so on so forth, so according to local law, if it's leaked, it, it's the owner's loss, in a sense. Uh in which case, and I know we were kind of evenly split on this, um I think that we have to say no based on our local law, that we would.
I would counsel you.
Yeah, cause that is what our local law says.
Well, based on our local law, I'll make the motion that we deny the request for a, for refund. Or concession.
For one twenty church street.
Yes.
And second by Brian, discussion, anybody? Okay, all in favor? Post? Alright.
Yeah, it simplifies.
So yeah, carries. Uh thank you Brian, Andy, for work on spotting that.
And if we can, the, the change to the letter that went out about water leaks made the point of saying that.
Yes.
It is the owner's responsibility and you do still have to pay your bill, which is an incentive to make sure that a leak.
Okay, um. What's that? Yeah, and I'll, 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 yeah, I'll sign off on that and then maybe I'll probably call Emily as well, since she knows. Um uh we've already discussed uh dedication, so we're looking to table this.
Motion to table.
Thank you Ben. Second Craig, all in favor? Opposed, carries, and uh we have not done anything new on the transfer station uh ideas for changes for prices because of everything else going on, so. Like to table that as well.
Motion to table.
Thank you Ben, Craig, all in favor? Post, carries, thank you. Um gotta make notes here. Okay, new business, we have a lot of um things related to Seeker uh for some of the projects going on. The first one we're gonna discuss is the Greenway Trail, uh this is the northern end, uh I think I sent you guys a copy. Of the proposal for product design administration. Um I'm just gonna paraphrase them, but if you wanna hop in, feel free. Um it's gonna develop, um to meet with village reps. Uh use some topographic data and field observations, generate a base map, develop a concept plan, prepare uh the recreational trail design reports. Submit the concept plan to Shippo, um. Advance to design a hundred percent final design documents, submit plans, um and then administrative uh hours overseeing this. The work that will be done based on the plans will be um in part volunteers and in part uh village. Um DPW guys, Neil's uh already aware on this, and I'm assuming that whenever those meetings happen, Neil uh will be there as well. This is basically the, the, the last, was it seven hundred feet or so? Um that takes you to the sewer plant road, uh and would also install five parking spots. So do you guys, B and L, or Brian, wanna hop in and explain anything more on this?
Um I mean, it's basically the grant.
The big issue is schedule, it's gotta move.
This was one where the funding on it was delayed from the federal government to New York State, and now it was a lot of waiting, and now it's a lot of hurry up.
And now it's, you better get the report done by the end of September.
Yeah.
Yeah, so and, and one other thing, I, I forgot to mention, when I sent you guys out the information on the budget. It was like a hundred thousand dollars or something like that, and the twenty-five percent was, was ours, it's actually a hundred thou- it's the hundred thousand plus our match. So it's actually more money than we thought we had uh for this, so uh that just gives us more money for materials and then.
So to clarify, that's a section where like, where the railroad did dug it up, is that correct?
Yeah, so this would be to make that parking inaccessible, and then probably at some point having Andy let the railroad know, don't drive on it, don't dig it up. And if they do, then you get to deal with those lovely folks. They're a pleasure.
Cause they kind of left it a mess.
Yeah, so, but that part also, just to note, uh that the company that did the sewer project work, when they did repair, we agreed with them. On the trail that they were not responsible for that part, because beforehand the railroad had already made it a mess.
That section, yeah.
Yeah, so they, I think they smoothed it a little, right Neil? Just moderately, but at the end of the day, we need to make sure that it's.
Alright.
Not used for railroad.
Yep.
Access.
So this um proposal will be twenty-three thousand five hundred total, uh seventeen thousand for design, sixty-five hundred for construction phase. Um I'm basically, all I need is a motion authorizing myself, the mayor to sign the proposal uh for design and administrative services.
Motion.
Thank you Brian, thank you Vanessa, any other questions? All in favor? Opposed, alright, motion carries, before you leave, I'll, I'll sign this for you and get it to you.
And to note for the record, that is grant money.
Yes, this is all grant money that needs to be spent quickly, so. Great, um in light of the fact that uh for the LWRP, um for the. Uh the Woods Brook CDBG grant, and also for the um WQIP UV disinfection, we have secret things going on. Andy, can you give us just a very quick summary of the secret procedures?
So what's surprising to me tonight is just to commence the seeker review, since there's a number of involved agencies, the first step is to. Send out a lead agency coordination notice under the seeker regs, only one of the involved agencies serves as the lead. The resolutions also indicate that the village board seeks to serve as lead agency, and be in the notice. You await the regulatory time period, presumably next month, you'll be able to move forward and declare lead agency status.
Okay. So this one from the local waterfront revitalization plan came in from Bob Murphy. Um this is the one, right? Resolution authorizing seeker, uh lead agency coordination with intent of village of Huzick Falls Village Board to serve as lead agency for the Huzick Falls. Local waterfront revitalization plan project, I'm just gonna go, now therefore be it resolved. That the village board of trustees hereby declares its intent to act as lead agency for the project, and be it further resolved, the village board. Directs Barton and Le Judas DPC to prepare a letter in part one of the full EAF. And to send such documents to other potentially involved agencies and interested agencies, as these quoted terms are defined in the regulations. Indicating the village board intends to serve as lead agency, as this quoted term is defined in the regulations. For according to review under seeker for the project, and that this resolution shall take effect immediately, so we will uh need this to be introduced, offered.
So I'll introduce the resolution authorized secretly J agency.
I mean, your seconds? Alright, um and roll call votes, right Andy, a roll call vote on this?
Alright.
Alright.
Who's my second? Kevin? Penn?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Rob?
And you gotta get them as well.
And Brian?
Yes.
And Craig?
Great, alright, thank you. Um the next seeker resolution is uh basically same thing, this is for the Woods Brook CDBG grant. Uh that we are doing with B and L and with the town of Huzick. Um resolution declaring the intent of the village of Huzick Falls to act as lead agency. Uh now therefore be it resolved and determined that the mayor and of the village of Huzick Falls is hereby authorized to sign part one of the full EAF form. Page thirteen, and it is further resolved and determined that the village board directs Barton Le Judas DPC. To circulate said part one of the full environmental assessment form um to the attached list of interested and involved agencies. Under the cover of notice uh of intent to establish lead agency, letter for purposes of establishing lead agency and status uh under seeker.
Do I need to read the whole thing?
Alright, great.
So moved.
Alright, so thank you Bobby. Second Craig, and another roll call vote please.
Mayor Allen?
Uh yes.
Deputy Ryan?
Yes.
Trustee Bushner?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis? Trustee O'Malley? Trustee Patton?
Yes.
And Trustee Payne.
Yes.
Alright, great, thank you, um. We'll come back to another secret thing in a moment, we had a uh situation uh when we were redoing the Rensler uh street pump station. We had a letter that came in uh to myself. Um that um I'll just quickly summarize, on Thursday, July eleventh, the fourth, water new pump station was installed. Unfortunately, when the water was turned back on, my mother's hot water heater blew. When I arrived to check uh on her Friday morning, the twelfth, I heard water running in the basement, I then discovered. That the water tank busted and water had been flowing all evening on the eleventh, and then through the night. Uh uh and uh of the night, I'm sorry, in the morning of the twelfth, I've enclosed a copy of her bill for the replacement of her hot water uh heater. From Conway Plumbing and Heating, I believe the village should reimburse my mother for this major expense. Uh that was not her fault, I'm also concerned with her water bill, uh that it's going to be very high, one that she cannot afford. My other concern is that when the basin flooded, her furnace was also in water, I'll have JP Conway look and see if there is any damage. I have not heard anything about damage to the furnace, so I have nothing else to offer on that. Um uh my mother's on a, a very tight fixed income, it's a very unfortunate situ- incident, but I'm sure the village will do the right thing and reimburse her for set damages. Thank you from Jennifer Saluzzo.
I think the right thing is, what's the legal thing?
Well, so, yeah.
Is there, was there a spike in pressure that was our fault, or was this, the pipes were old and. And it just, when they got regular pressure after being under low pressure so many years, they failed.
We had two situations uh where this happened, and this is um, and they happened within, I think, two hours of each other. Um of within a couple of hours of it being online for the first time. Uh so I spoke with Jim and Josh, um and they are convinced that the, the, the fact this happened. Within just a few hours of everything going on, within a few hours of each other, means that this is because the, the new water pressure up there is, is. It, it, it is finally correct, sufficient in a sense. Um the bill here is for um eight hundred and seven dollars, we did not get any contact from the other owner, who had their um hot water heater go. Uh their water bill uh jumped quite a bit, their normal consumption averaged between twenty-five hundred and thirty-three hundred. And this one was uh thirteen thousand, uh so that was a definite shot up in usage, uh Andy legally speaking?
Yeah, this would fall in the category of a property owner making a claim against the village. It's different than a war bill or anything like that, this is a claim that through village conduct, through the property damage. When the village receives a claim like that, it's within the discretion of the village board to review that. And make any disposition that they deem to be in the overall public interest, to resolve a claim, to settle a claim, or to dispute the claim. That issue about causation, that's the right question. Is the village, if there are any fault or responsibility for that, incurred from your village water department? Um that should be considered by the village board, but it's really within your discretion on like, how you want to handle that claim. And you do have the legal authority to resolve that claim, in the manner you think is in the overall best interest of the village. Now, if you consider that letter to be a claim, it's not a formal lawsuit, but it is a, a, a claim, a demand.
Also, would homeowner, I would assume the other owner may have had homeowners cover this, possibly. Um but I, I don't wanna set a precedent of unless it was a pressure spike on our end, I mean. That's a lot of taxpayer money to deal with a private residence.
Insurance come into play in this, either village.
Yeah, do we have homeowners? Can we put a claim in for, for our insurance with that, against that, or is there, is it above the, I mean, the minimum of the?
It, it may be below deductible on that.
That's, yeah.
That's a question that's appropriate to pose to Matt Cronin, they'll take a look at your policy, see if there's cop.
But, I mean, if Jim and Josh feel that it's due to the increased water pressure, I think that. We don't have much other recourse other than to honor that request, is what I, I feel, but that's my opinion.
In my mind, because, you know, obviously the water pressure seems like it caused the issue, but the issue also could have been that it was just old. Or the pipes were old, so in my mind, I think saying, alright, we'll cover half, and the homeowner covers half. Because the water pressure may have caused it, but it also could have been the fact that it was old, or the piping was old, or whatever.
But I think it's an important distinction to make that, that the pressure level is what the pressure should be. It wasn't a, oh, we turned the valve runway and we, the pressure shot up way over where it should be and it busted it. That what I'd say we absolutely should cover.
Right.
But in this case, because we upgraded something that deferred maintenance for thirty years, has been lower and lower pressure. That it, I have a hard time with.
Unless there was an initial spike when they started running for the first time, I don't know.
Well, the other, the other end, the, the other flip side to that too is you're looking at people who lived up in that section of the community. For all the years with the lousiest water pressure in the country.
Right, right.
And now you give them good water pressure and this happens, I don't, I think we should honor it in full, that's my opinion.
So I have, I have one question, sorry.
No.
Um the, the, we just went through the usage, and we have a local law about water usage.
That, that was my question too, so.
So we just went through that, and now that's included in there.
But is that a differ- is, Andy, is that a difference because it's, because it's off of the water tank and not necessarily a problem with the?
With the actual billing?
Right, right.
Yeah, I think that's gonna be tied toward the village conduct on the public works project, here's a couple of questions. How many residents, how many homes would have been affected by the increased pressure?
Thirty-some, right Neil?
Alright, you, you've got thirty-some odd properties, and two of them have notified of a problem. And so the balance clearly did not, or at least they haven't notified you, that brings up Brian's point. In part this, that, that would tend to lead to the conclusion that it was an issue about an, an old water tank substandard. Did they keep the water tank? Usually when you're looking at a claim, you wanna take a look at the actual tank, the equipment, to see its shape. Did that contribute to the damage? Probably they didn't save it, now you don't have the opportunity to take a look at it. And then the last question, you heard from one but not the other, inquire about their homeowner's policy, was there. Insurance available and that they make a claim on the policy, these are all some things that are, that could be relevant, that, that you could take into account in.
Can we, can we table this to look for more, to look at further information between now and the next meeting? It just seem, just seems like if we do some more due diligence, we can at least come to a better decision about what to do.
I, I, that's fine, and we can get the questions answered from, from her as well.
Cause it seems like there's quite a few questions that need to be kind of fleshed out a little bit, to make sure that we're making the right decision, right?
Yes, I, yeah, I, is everyone okay with that?
Well, the other question too we have is, they also mentioned, mentioned about the furnace, so we, we ought to find out for sure if the furnace has been.
I've had a couple follow-up emails with her, and she never mentioned the furnace, so I'm gonna assume that it's good.
Down the road acknowledging it, and sometimes if we, without knowing for sure that it was, we were at fault. That it could be a domino effect, oh, in the middle of winter, there's an issue with the furnace, well, it's because of what you did, this could turn into. Or other people could find problems with their furnace when they turn it on and decide, oh, it's the water pressure, you gave money to them. So I think we really should vet this out fully. And make sure that we are on the best side of the entire village and for the resident as well.
That sounds good.
We're gonna make a motion to table this?
Do you wanna make that motion?
Yes, he did, and I seconded it.
Alright, Brian, Craig, um uh any further discussion? Uh in that case, looking uh.
I just have a quick question, is your deductible cumulative or per event?
It's a fine question.
You wouldn't know, Jay.
I would think it's, it's per, per events, but the policy may be written that when you reach a certain amount. You've met the deductible, I mean, there's a lot of issues that pop up in my mind, presuming it's a claims made policy.
We're gonna check it. It's one of those things, we'll do that.
Sure.
They saw it, right?
Yeah, they saw it, yeah. I mean, I, 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 again, verify with Josh today, um you know, the fact these happen within a couple of hours of each other. Within a couple of hours of, of it, the new system coming online.
Yeah, so that's why.
They feel pretty conclusionally, it was because of the, 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 the water pressure increase, so. Alright, so uh we have a motion on uh to table, it's been uh seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Post? Great, uh it is tabled. Um can you remind me tomorrow or the next day to send an email uh response to her? Alright, um now, we had a, a, a quirky thing come up with the Woods Brook buyout program that we needed a signature, and we sent them the signature, and they said, no, no. We need two signatures, and we're like, well, we didn't, we didn't do that, and they said, well, we want you to, so. Um we, we all pulled straws, no, I'm just kidding, uh decided uh deputy mayor would be the guy to uh also sign on this, and we have the, the paper right here. For, for you to sign if this is approved, so we just have a, a basic resolution that uh um authorized as de- deputy mayor to also execute the uh grant agreement. On behalf of the village of Huzick Falls. This is the buyout program that we're, we're doing with the state, yeah.
Now Bobby, since you're related to three quarters of people in the village. Do you have any relatives down here?
No, I do not.
Third person's.
No, I do not.
Now therefore be resolved by the village board of trustees of the village of Huzick Falls in regular session duly convened as follows, one. The village board of trustees hereby confirms its authorization for the mayor, and also hereby authorizes the deputy mayor. To execute on behalf of the village of Huzick Falls a grant agreement by between New York State. Through the Housing Trust Fund Corporation and the village of Huzick Falls with respect to the same grant awarded to the village of Huzick Falls. As described herein, so we need someone to offer the resolution? Anybody wanna offer the resolution?
And I was second offering.
Our two over there were side chatting, so I missed, alright, so Craig offered it, and uh Brian seconded it. Uh this is a roll call uh vote please.
Trustee Payne?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Uh yes.
I was gonna think about it, but Ben.
Got a kidney stone in his bottom.
Yes.
And Deputy Mayor Ryan.
I'll abstain.
And since I have you right here.
Alright, can you sign this?
That's the fastest I've ever seen government work.
That's, that's how we roll here. Alright. Alright. Okay, we have um a resolution also on courting secretly the agency for um uh the wastewater treatment plants, um uh WQIP program UV filtration treatment, I am, I think I'm out of um abbreviations to throw out there. Robert, did you wanna say anything?
Um it looks like you guys are well versed in seeker and type one access now.
Oh, yeah, yeah, although I literally have had Andy had it explained to me like five times this summer, so I feel bad for him.
But uh but I obviously wanna do the intent to be lead agency, I wanna get your signature on the part one, and send the coordinator letters out.
Alright, that sounds good. Um so here is the resolution, Village of Huzik Falls wastewater treatment plant uh affluent disinfection, intent to declare lead agency under seeker, now therefore be it resolved uh that the Villa- Huzik Village Board proposes to act as lead agency in the coordinated review of the wastewater treatment plant project, and shall distribute the attached notice of intent, part one of the EAF and project description and map to all potentially involved and interested agencies, so if someone to offer the resolution?
I will offer the resolution for the disinfection.
Thank you, Brian.
Did that say Huzik Village Board or Huzik Falls? And that should be changed if it's not.
Yeah, Huzik, can we do that, just add falls in? Okay, yeah, Huzik Falls Village Board.
I thought he did too, that's why, that's why I brought it up.
Yep. Thank you, Huzik Falls.
It's finally happened.
Alright, uh def- I'm sorry, a roll call vote, yes, I'm a yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Bushner?
Yep.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
And Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you guys. Awesome, and you were the one who designed the the wastewater treatment plant as it exists now?
Yeah, guilty, yeah.
You're like a celebrity around here. I'm talking about how great that is, like, it was like, all excitement, remember last month?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's a good thing, I guess.
Yep.
I haven't seen people get excited about a sewer plant ever.
I know, right?
Got some sort of magic, I don't know.
Alright, one last thing, um and then um that will conclude our sort of our open business, we'll move into executive session, discuss personnel, but before I do, I'll sign whenever you guys need me to sign. Um so we have um a resolution uh authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the town of Huzik concerning assessor duties. Um Andy, can you give us a quick thirty-second version of what got us here?
What got us here was the local law to uh discontinue the village as a separate assessing unit, you abolish the role of village assessor. Uh the town assessor is picking up certain duties, um assisting the village residents on questions concerning their village tax bills, and as a result of that, there's a request by the town to contribute uh an amount toward the overall compensation for the town assessor. Uh we discussed this at your June meeting and authorized the preparation of the intermunicipal agreement. Uh that was drafted and reviewed and forwarded over to the town, and it's in front of you tonight for approval.
So-
It uh, the agreement itself does identify the tasks that the town assessor will be performing on behalf of the village and village residents, it outlines timeframes, five hours per week, it outlines uh the amount annually that will be paid, it's a total of sixty-five hundred dollars per year to contribute toward the compensation for the town assessor to perform these village tasks.
What are those tasks?
The tasks are preparation and delivery to the village of a copy of the appropriate part of the final town assessment roll within five uh days of its um preparation filing. Uh apportionment of special franchise assessments on the town of Huzik assessment roll for village tax purposes.
Would that be playing Asher group, spectrum cable, et cetera?
Okay. With respect to parcels located in the village, reduction of total assessed value to taxable assessed value in accordance with exemptions adopted by the village, so if there's certain exemptions the village board adopts, the town assessor will do those appropriate uh reductions for village tax purposes. Uh include relevant village real property tax information as part of the town Huzik annual report by the state. Respond to inquiries of the Village of Huzik Falls property owners and Village of Huzik Falls officials concerning village real property tax matters and accessibility to village property owners through telephone or in-person appointments to answer those questions. Provision of immediate notice to the village of any legal proceedings challenges, challenging the assessment of any property located in the village. So the assessor has estimated since the village abolished the village assessor position, we've been spending about five hours per week. Uh those tasks would be dedicated that time during the week to village residents.
Most of those tasks, most are separate from what you would do if it was just town anyhow.
That's correct, he would have been-
Most of them are, I just wanna see if they were, cause our question, I don't know, Kevin before was, are we double paying at this point, cause we are also paying town tax, but those are very specific to village property, so.
It is, and then these are tasks that would have been done in his role as village assessor. So we've abolished that, and there's some consolidation of effort, but there's still some duties that I'll be performing particularly for village.
And all the, all the staff said, you know, agrees and says this is stuff we normally ask for and get with services, so.
I think that's nice to have a clear, just that it's cleared up that it's not a duplication of services, that they're distinct, so I'm-
Alright, so um the resolution was passed at the town board meeting last night. Um so this is the resolution approving intermunicipal agreement with the town of Huzik concerning assessor duties. Uh now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of the Village of Huzik Falls in regular session duly convenience follows, one, the Board of Trustees hereby approves the form and content of the intermunicipal agreement with the town of Huzik concerning duties of the town of Huzik assessor as attached hereto in exhibit A, and further authorizes and directs the mayor to execute such intermunicipal agreement on behalf of the Village of Huzik Falls, need someone to offer the resolution?
I'll offer.
Thank you, Ben.
Second.
Second Vanessa, and roll call vote please.
Trustee Pine?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Patton?
Yes.
Trustee Lewis?
Yes.
Trustee Bushner?
Yep.
Mayor Allen?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ryan?
I'm going to abstain because I'm related to him.
He's my first cousin.
Does this mean when we send the police out into the town, we could charge the town for?
No, no.
Wait, quick scribble it in at the bottom before she puts in the final tally.
Alright, um alright, um can you, uh town supervisor, um pass it on to uh Tony and thank him for his patience uh with this. Uh unless there's anyone else who has any business to bring in front of us, um looking for a motion to enter executive session to discuss personnel.
Motion.
Thank you, Ben, thank you, Craig, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will enter executive session at seven eighteen PM.
That was classy to the K.
I was, I was very close, I was very close Vanessa.